It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yep.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Present.
Hedley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Thank you. You have the September 5th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion to approve those if no one has any corrections or questions.
I would make that motion to approve the minutes as written.
No, I'll second.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Here.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
We have two sets of approved bills in your packet. We'll do one motion for both of them.
And the second batch, the building inspection from Thomas Hall that you wanted on High Street.
That and a Smith Street resident. He did two buildings.
Okay.
On High Street with Colley's?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I see Dan Iker got a sewer lateral. I'm guessing it's on me.
Yeah, this goes back to, call it the middle of 2016. An Ogen Street project.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We had two conflicts on Columbia that were paid, which you guys didn't know anything about. We used contingency money on that. There was, I think even one of them, one of your rentals. When people didn't have cleanouts, they ended up with a conflict with their lateral for the new storm lanes. We had one on Ogen, which was Dan's. And I'd been waiting since January for his bill. And he had gotten an estimate. He ended up doing it cheaper than what his estimate was because he did work himself. And his price wasn't too much out of line with the other two that he handled.
To put a cleanout on?
No, he actually had to replump part of his house and get it out and tie it in.
Okay.
And that freed up more money to pave all of Ogen. That's why this one wasn't part of any change order initially.
I have one for the police chief, the phone repair. Was that a cellphone or what?
The call box up front.
Of the office?
Yes.
And then the fire equipment that was, what is that?
Which one?
Fire equipment for $12,000.
Turn on here.
Yeah, what is it?
It's our clothes and pants.
Stuff to wear.
Stuff to wear into the fire.
Is that like several of them or?
It's five pairs.
Five?
Five sets. And I budget for 10 a year. We go through and evaluate everybody's. And we go by the date of manufacture, which they've got a 10-year lifespan on them. And then we go, we looked at the quality of the gear, if they're tore up or deep bed. They're on Sagard, so it's not one gig set.
Okay. It was just a big number and I thought, well, I'm gonna ask. I don't know anything about that.
I budget it every year.
Okay.
Mine's got a small number, but the last page of the first section, the full lifeguard certificate, there's three of them. Is there, is that typo or is that, why is one of them $5 less than the rest?
It was a different year.
Oh.
They get them for two years.
Okay.
Chief Kramer, you got fire pack inspection once for $475. You did it again for $790.55.
That is actually the air pack hydro staff test. We have 36 bottles total plus 12 for cascade system.
I mean, I guess I'm asking why are there separate billings?
There's separate billing because I asked them to bill all at once, but apparently they didn't. We send over 12 small bottles at a time because we don't have all of our air packs upstairs.
Good. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else? Otherwise I say let's pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Upstain.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
So you're just comparing the combined total of 76, 758, 42 then.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's gotta be on the sheet.
Right.
Unless my math's wrong. 76, 758, 42 would be the total. Now let's show you.
Okay. You ready to go on, Mike? All right.
Hmm?
You okay to go on?
Yep. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right. Park Board minutes are in the packet. And we have Park Board President Rick Belton here in case you have any questions about anything with Park tonight. Okay. Revolving loan committee minutes from a September 20th meeting is in the packets. And then we have a planning commission minutes from September 21st that are in the packets regarding a lot split. Looks like this corner between the corner of Chicago Avenue and 617 Spencerville Street. It appears that was granted. Going on to the council committee reports, we have personnel committee. Does anyone have anything they want to add about that or any questions?
Would this be a good time for me to add, Mayor?
Uh, sure.
Personnel committee met several times, a lot of times, searching for Kent's replacement. As you know, it's not an easy job. Uh, we got it narrowed down to three. And all three of us agreed on the gentleman that I'm about to present. It was very close. It was a very hard decision to make. And I hope you will all be happy with it. And the gentleman that will take Kent's place is James Brown. He is currently living in Edgerton. Uh, he's had, he has family here in town. He went to school here in town. He has a lot of past administration. He has been an administrator before. He comes highly recommended from anybody you want to talk to. They brag about him being able to find money when nobody else can. He was just, he was our candidate. So I would like to present James to the mayor to have him welcomed aboard.
I would recommend James. I only know him as Jim.
Yeah.
Jim Brown for the administrator's position.
I would support that recommendation with a motion that we bring him onboard as the administrator of Hicksville, James Brown.
And I'll second that.
And this, of course, is all pending. Good drug screen, physical background check.
How soon transition?
He needs two weeks at his other job and then he'll, he'll be here and he's thinking that hopefully within a week to two weeks of tagging Kent, he can be ready to take off.
Okay, sounds good.
Is there a probation period for, I've never had to, at that level?
Yeah, it'd be the same as everybody else.
That should be on the record too.
Six months.
Yeah. And roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else on the committee?
Uh, no, that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much. And thank you very much to the committee for everything we had to go through to get where we got.
Are there any committee reports or are there any committees that have met anybody else that?
Personnel, no. Finance, here personnel. Budgets from department heads. I talked to Cheryl and so we need those. They were supposed to be by the 1st of October. Here is the 2nd, so. Because we've got only, like to have them at least this week coming up if possible.
Okay. Any, any other committees? All right. We are on to the administrator's report.
Yeah, you have things here. Here's the first one. We'll do the insurance. We'll get that one out of the way first. Everybody should have got a copy of our new policy. Probably those important papers just showing you what the cost is this year. The, the new policy versus what we paid last year, it went up about 300, about $280, somewhere in that range. Basically about identical to what we've been having. And this will be another three-year policy unless you don't want to go that route. We've had pretty, we've had pretty steady renewals the past few years, but you can handle it however you want. So I guess we just need, I guess you're okay to renew with all this and I'll get with Conrad and you can get with Cheryl. The policy actually expires Thursday. No, Wednesday, I'm sorry, on the 4th. I would make a motion that we accept their proposal. And I would also in the motion say that let's go with the three years like we have before.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Tell you what, you want to take care, it kind of can't fall under me if we want to take care of Chris and then I'll move on to the big.
Chris, would you like to come to the podium, please, and address council?
I just had a couple of questions. When they dug up my yard, they dug up my dog fence. My wife's been trying to get that, something done about that. And the guy that was in charge of it told us to get an estimate and we brought it up there and it's been shot down. I haven't heard anything. I can't get any help on it. So I didn't know which way to turn on it.
Did you talk to that Mike Purnett was Underground?
Mike Purnett? I talked to the guy at the end of the block, yeah. Is that who you're talking about?
Well, that Mike Purnett is the project manager for the company that did the work. Have you gotten all those notices back before they started where they wanted people to give them a heads up what they hid? I mean, I had a copy of that in my letter to you. They said they went door to door with everybody.
I didn't get one. At least I didn't see one. And another question I got is, which you guys probably had a lot of complaints off and on, but my ditch kind of slopes the opposite way. And I got a pocket of water that kind of sits on the west end, which they've come out and looked at it, but I just wanted to get it out there.
Is that on the punch list?
Yep. Have they responded to your punch list?
We have a list.
Yeah, some guy came out.
Yeah, they haven't done anything yet.
They haven't done anything.
Then we keep back money. Oh, yeah, we still own. Okay, that's good. But. Have they been returning your calls? They have not. I finally got a reply from EMHT on part of the issues. I still don't think they're going to be able to redo the swales till maybe spring. The last I had actually heard, not via email or anything, was they wanted to give those more time to settle out and then they would come back in the spring. Maybe that's changed. I have not heard. A lot of the other piddly restoration work, there's no reason why they can't be back. I mean, it's not piddly to the residents, it's piddly stuff on their end that they don't need 18 people out putting up stop signs and some simple stuff. So I have not gotten a definite. I guess their last warning, warning, they got to have something to us by October 6th telling us when they're going to do it. But it's like telling a little kid one more time, one more time, one more time. So we'll see if we hear anything by October 6th.
What about his situation with his dog fence?
Would this be something you'd like to see go to committee, the streetlight and property committee or anything, Cap?
Well, yeah, because, I mean, I sent you a letter saying why I didn't think we'd be on the hook because.
Could you explain it to all of council? Because I don't know if they're all aware of it.
Well, no, I sent it to part of what, sewer bit.
Right.
But basically, and you're gonna say supposedly, all the residents out there got a notice back in February, March from Underground. Saying if they had any stuff they wanted removed, like landscaping stuff or whatever, you know, if they wanted it salvaged to get it out of the way. And let them know if there's anything in the way that an oops call wouldn't pick up, which in this case, an underground fence would fall under oops. So I guess the letter I sent to Chris, I just pointed out, I don't think the village is responsible because I didn't know there was a dog fence there. And if he had gotten a notice, which might be up for dispute, he should have let the contractor know that. But now I guess it's back to if they didn't get the notice, then we're back to.
Well, I think a lot of people didn't get notices.
Was it in the right of way?
I found one in my front yard.
Did they only dig in the right of way?
Did you?
Where would your dog fence have ended? Would it have been on the backside of that soil or was it way up in your yard?
It was on the backside of the tree. I used to be there, which they removed the tree, but it wasn't.
It's a little bit on your property. Not in the right of way.
Have you gotten it fixed yet?
No, I haven't. I was.
How much was it?
Well, the quote from the guy down the street was like $1,200.
Wow.
And I was thinking about, uh, he said he could replace just the line for half that price, which I told either him or another guy when I came in with the quote. But, uh, I was thinking about going with the wireless one right now because I just need to get my dog fenced right now. So that one was like 240 bucks or something like that for a good one.
When they were digging out there, did you notice, you probably knew right away how far they were up in it, that they had ripped it out of there?
Well, we knew right away.
Yeah. Did you ever talk to while they were out there working or?
I talked to one of the guys out there and he said to get a quote around. And he said, but it was just a worker I was talking to. I didn't talk to anybody else. I didn't really know who was in charge, who wasn't in charge out there.
If it was up there by your tree, that's way, that's, that's on you. I mean, that, you know, a lot of places, they had to come up on the homeowner's property.
Yeah.
Sounds like that's what happened.
So which way?
So is that on the punch list or something like that? That's not. And do we ever talk to, I know I talked to Ken Kearns today and he was getting, he sent a letter out to Underground, kind of telling them, you better get going on this or else. And he sent that out this afternoon, but, um. I didn't know. It wasn't on the punch list at the same time. Do they, does Mike Purnett know about the situation they left him in?
Yeah, I'd left a message a long time ago.
They're just not responding. And I know Ken Kearns is kind of getting upset that Underground's not responding to their emails either, so.
Let's decide what we want to do about Chris's problem. You know, do you want to get it to a committee or do you want to make a decision right now?
I think we ought to help him.
Withhold it from the money.
Yeah.
You what?
Really?
The money that's owed to Underground.
We got a bunch of money.
And withhold it from the money.
What would you like to see? Would you like to go to the wireless one or would you like to just get, get the line fixed?
Um, trying to talk to my wife about it.
Good answer.
Would you shop that around? $1,200 sounds extremely expensive.
That's what I thought too. I couldn't believe that neither. He said he could replace the line, just the line, keep my, everything else for half of what that was. Because I couldn't believe that neither, so.
I would be, I would be more in favor of that if you want to keep the Underground.
Yeah, just the line.
You'd probably be happier just the line too, wouldn't you?
Yeah. I mean, the unit I had worked fine.
Well, I make a motion to let him fix his line at an estimated cost of $600, not to exceed. And we will pull the funds from.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And then by cutting that, couldn't have damaged anything else, equipment wise?
Usually it does. Your unit's in the garage.
Yeah, my unit's in the garage.
Or you want them.
Because they know exactly where it got cut.
The whole new head and the needs done.
So they just splice it and go.
I think that's fair. Do you?
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
There you go, Chris.
I'll give everybody a heads up.
So we can actually do that with old money that we built in this state.
We're gonna try it.
Well.
They're talking 600 bucks. I mean, what are they gonna do about 600 bucks?
So what, how much money did you withhold from that project?
Do you remember what we got left on? Probably a couple hundred thousand.
Oh, I thought a couple hundred.
You just went whole.
And there's dirt behind my place for filling in. Big pile of dirt back there, so it's, dirt's there.
Well, anyway, I had sent them a certified letter, which they signed, which shocked me too, for water that they caused a huge leak. And like our time and expense and all of that, it comes, I want to say it's around 1,700 or so. We'll see if they pay that. I mean, that was costs we incurred because of something they did. So we might be deducting even more if they don't pay that upfront. Just to say they won't talk to you.
Anything else, Cap?
Yes. Since it's made my day, I'll make your day. In the past. On CDPG projects, community development block. We've got one area in town. And even when it was other areas in town when I first started, streets that were borderline, like the edge of that border, there was no problem having work done on those. You submitted, so anyway, West Arthur, the 100 block, and West Cornelia, I was gonna pave next year. Total price was around 59,000. We had already been granted $24,500 from the commissioner. But Mommy Valley just found out Thursday of last week. The new federal guideline says border streets have to have an income survey. So April, April back here in his office, I scrambled, got stuff around, she got envelopes, stuff mailed. I'm sorry, it was about last Monday. I hit it myself. The, the results were due Friday, the 29th. We sent 32 letters. We got eight back. Two of them, one didn't put their address down, but they checked their income box, so that didn't help. Another one had their income but no address, so that didn't help. And one got returned by the post office, so evidently it's empty. But be that as it may, I talked to Mommy Valley. I said, what, what percent do we have to have to keep our money? She goes, it's got to be 100%. So since we only got six valid responses. You got to get the other 25 or 26. And we got to go door to door. Does anybody want to go door to door? And see if people will respond. I think I know the answer already.
Would you tell us the amount of money that we're talking about getting by getting the income surveys back?
$24,500.
How many houses?
You definitely go, if counting the one where it came back returned, I, I can't believe nobody's living there, but maybe not. So at the most, you would have 26.
And what's the timeline?
Yeah, deadline.
They'd like to have them by Thursday morning. Well, yeah, because the feds are saying if you don't, if you don't get the 100% response and you don't get the money. And then that just creates a major hassle for the towns in Mommy Valley.
We've never got 100% response on anything.
I know. I do not know why people won't, we gave them, we turned envelopes, the mail back. It would have cost them nothing. All they got to do is check two boxes. It's anonymous.
You could get some votes that way, Ron.
Not if you go door to door.
Well.
I got Ron.
If you go door to door, there'll have to be some way of fill this out, slip it in here without us seeing it.
I can do it tomorrow. That's the only thing I can do it. So I'd be glad to.
I guess if you sent me a letter that said that you were going to pave my street if I signed it and you weren't if I didn't. And I didn't send it back to you, I guess I don't deserve a paved street. Yeah, it said on there. Pretty simple. Project accomplished and you're leery. And I understand people are leery, but if your name's not included.
So if I come out this morning, you'll give me a list.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've got everything.
And I should be able to do it one day.
If they're not home, that's if people are home and willing to even do it.
Yeah, that's the biggest. If it's 100%, you get one person that says, I ain't giving you the information. You're done.
You already have one because the guy.
You got people that are.
And nobody lives there.
Well, see now there, because another house on West Cornelia is empty, but it just sold. So I mean, there's nobody in that house. So that one, yeah, fine.
If it's gonna do any good, if I, I can only do it tomorrow.
Well, you give it a shot. You only get three people responding.
You what?
You're just spinning your wheels. I mean, I'd like, at least like to give it a shot. I hate giving back the money and creating a headache. I said, this is the first time this has ever come up. I've used border streets before.
100% of those people have to respond. Well, it's not gonna happen. But I'm willing to give it a shot.
Is this a new law with border streets? Is this new policy?
Said it's a new federal regulation. Because I said, it's never happened before. I tell you, the past week, I felt like everything's falling apart since I said I couldn't. I feel bad. I mean, I do.
Oh, my.
A meeting we had this morning makes me sick. This really, it irritates me more than anything because it's unnecessary. There's just some other stuff I feel like, what am I leaving New Guy with?
Breaking loose, huh?
Yeah, and I don't like that. But anyway, this is out of my hands. Never happened before. Didn't see it coming.
If we had more time, maybe.
Well, wherever you can, if you leave a list of who you, who you couldn't find at home, let me know and I can do Tuesday, Wednesday.
I can try some too.
Okay, I'll be up tomorrow morning.
I'll have stuff up here.
I'm retired now, so I got a little time now.
I think that's it for me. Yeah, I think.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kim. We'll go to the administrator's report.
I don't want to go through that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go to the, we'll go to the solicitor's report.
And if everything's falling apart, I sure as heck don't want the job.
Still had in my mind trying to get those 32 surveys answered.
First thing I have is ordinance 2017-16, a third reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the fee charge for sidewalk permits.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2017-17, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance adopting chapter 923 of the codified ordinances regarding maintaining drainage swales and ditches, tampering with drainage swales and ditches, and describing a penalty for violations of said regulations. Then in the packet, I assume everybody got that in the packet, Cheryl had included, um, basically, there is a law firm that is soliciting municipalities to join in with other municipalities in challenging the new tax regulations that are going to take effect on where the state's slowly moving towards taking over the collection of municipal income taxes. They scaled it back a little bit to get it passed, but as it currently sits whenever it takes effect. They're gonna be basically collecting the business net, net.
they're gonna be basically collecting the business net profit taxes on behalf of municipalities. If you remember, was it like two years ago when we had those wholesale changes to our tax code that the state law said we had to implement regardless so that there was a uniformed tax statute? At the time, there were some municipalities who considered challenging the constitutionality of that act by the General Assembly. And I think whether it was on legal advice or whatever, they decided they were gonna let it go at that time. But a number of them reserved the right to revisit it in the event that the state kept stepping on their toes, basically. So what you have basically is a potential challenge based upon the home rule provisions of the state constitution, which basically says there's a number of matters that municipalities, villages, and cities by their nature have the right to regulate themselves. It's clear in prior Supreme Court decisions that taxation is one of those things. The problem with it is there's two other sections of the constitution that say the state General Assembly maintains the right to kinda restrict municipalities' ability to collect. In other words, we can't go off and do whatever we want. They got a right to step in and basically say we're doing it wrong or we're mistreating our citizens. So under those provisions, is what the General Assembly has said, you know, they're not stepping on our toes. They're just assisting with the collection and yada, yada, yada.
Taking part of our money to do that.
Right, right. Long story short, so they are, the law firm that sent the letter, I was telling Cheryl, several years ago, there was, when some law firms were scaling back on their people, big law firms in the state were having financial issues or whatever, and they started scaling back. One of the sections that they frequently cut where they all had three or four guys that had practiced in the area of public matters, representing municipalities and things like that, in favor of keeping their big corporate departments that represented the big corporations and everything. So all those guys basically collectively got together and said, well, you know, why work for other people? Why don't we just all form a firm and we'll just do, this is all we'll do? And so that's the law firm that's soliciting, that's basically all they do. They're good lawyers, they got good reputations or whatever. I've talked to multiple people about it. They basically say any lawsuit at best is a 50-50 chance. And the reason being is, as much as it shouldn't be, Ohio Supreme Court's got, there's political issues there too, even though it's a court. And so it all comes down on whose side they're gonna come down on, and it may involve a political decision. And so what they're trying to do is they're trying to get as many municipalities as possible to pay lawyer, attorney fees and be a party to like a class action suit. Basically, what they would do is file either an action in the Supreme Court, asking them to declare that the law is unconstitutional, or file in one of the common police courts in any of the counties in the state. And I'm sure there would be a political decision made under which one's the best place to file it and who's the best judge that will consider their constitutional arguments and people that deal with it a lot more than I do that know those things and whatnot. So what they're asking, they sent out a letter basically to all the municipalities, asking who wants to join, who wants to pay and be a part of the suit, which probably means nothing more than you're paying the attorney fee. I mean, it's not like they're gonna expect the mayor of Hicksville to come and testify in court or the village tax person to come be a witness or whatever. They'll have all those people and, you know, they'll come from the bigger, the bigger places. And it's not clear yet what the major cities, another thing I was telling Cheryl is, usually these type of things are driven by what's affectionately often referred to as the three Cs in Toledo. So Columbus, Cleveland, Cincinnati, the people that have big budgets, big law departments and things like that. The last time, we discussed this today over in defiance, but the last time in Ohio that something was challenged by the home rule authority successfully, Toledo was the lead plaintiff with their law department, and it had to do with those traffic cameras where they were getting the red light tickets that just went through probably two or three years ago. And they kinda spearheaded that and were the driving force behind that lawsuit. So it's unclear what position they're gonna take. People you talk to that are in the legislature and stuff say, you know, what the city of Columbus wants people to do usually goes a long way because all the legislators are there all the time and they got a lot of contacts. They obviously opposed it two years ago. They were one of the groups that were opposing the changes in the in the regulations, and they're still opposing it, but it's not clear whether they're gonna pony up some money and fight the fight or if they're just gonna let it slowly slip away. And the concern is, like everything else, kinda like it was two years ago, you let them get their foot in the door and you're not gonna get it back out. So now they're just talking business net profit taxes. Two years from now, they'll be changing it to something else. The next thing you know, they'll be collecting everything and we'll be losing a portion of our money and not have any say in the collection of it.
But, but on page three, under the lack of statutory authority paragraph, it pretty much sums it up, that the state admits that it has no authority, but forces each municipality to grant it the authority or risk losing its authority to collect income taxes at all.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm saying it's 50-50. I mean, you gotta convince a Supreme Court judge that, to make it in its simplest form, that a municipality's home rule authority trumps the other portions of the constitution that grant the state legislature the right to kinda regulate municipalities' taxation of their.
Sure, we can't even convince 30 people on the street to sign a letter to let us pave it. How are we gonna convince it that?
My gut reaction is you guys do what you want. I don't remember what the amount is. Do you remember what the amount is that they're asking?
By population, so it's only $1,000.
$1,000, so if you wanna contribute $1,000 and be a named plaintiff in the hopes of trying to spur it along, that's not setting you back as much as it would if we were Columbus or Cleveland or somebody had to really, I don't know how much they're looking at, but really invest some money. But it's, you know, it's still money out there that's, in my opinion, may or may not do any good.
Well, I've spent years defending Hicksville's village income tax against every change that the state has tried to make. And I have tried to encourage every other municipality to make their feelings known to our legislators and everything else. And, and to me, jumping in on this is something that we, I, I just feel like we need to, to support and let the big dogs fight it out for us, you know?
I mean, they're the ones that are gonna be putting the money up if it's gonna be done. It's gonna be the bigger cities that are gonna be putting the money up.
They're the ones gonna be putting the money up. Let them put it up.
Well, that's.
And there's a lot of places that have that opinion is, we'll support them, we'll do whatever, but we'll stand on the sidelines and cheer rather than, you know, grab a ball and go shoot a basket or whatever. There's a lot, lot of smaller, particularly municipalities that are taking that position.
It's just a big money grab.
Well, it's, I mean, I guess I could say it's lawyers, yeah. It's a money, it's a money grab by the state, but this lawsuit is, I mean, it's. It's like all other class action lawsuits. It's usually driven by lawyers seeing that there's an issue out there and, hey, let's get as much as we can and then we'll go fight the case. And they believe in it. I'm sure they believe in the cause and they think they got good arguments. And, but I think if you talk to them, they would tell, they would say, hey, it's 50-50 at best, probably.
What's the timeline? Do we have to be?
I think it's pretty quick if we, if we wanna, I mean, if we give them notice that we want in, then we, there is a resolution we'll have to pass like at our next meeting. But I think if I remember correctly, we could. That's when they're gonna, that's when the new law takes effect.
What's your thought, Cheryl? What's your thought?
I'll find the money. If they don't spend it, they give it back to you anyway.
Well, I guess if nobody wants to make a motion to do that, then we're the one.
I can make that motion, see how it flies. I'll make a motion that we join as a coalition.
Okay.
If it don't pass, then we don't.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Says say sure.
At least we're only throwing away $1,000.
$1,000.
Yeah.
But $1,000 means a lot to me. I mean, if I had to get it out of my own pocket, I'd say no. So I guess based on that theory, no.
Hedley?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then Diane and I had a conversation about the CRA legislation. I'm still, I gotta get with Jerry Hayes. I got the resolution done. Remember, there was a report from the committee that met the last time that came up with proposed duration and amounts as far as the CRA stuff. So I have a draft, it's a lengthy resolution. The one issue that had to be addressed is, basically, I guess in my opinion, based upon Jerry Hayes's advice, the committee was recommending that the, the income survey basically said we could make the entire village constitute the CRA. He was recommending for practical reasons that we exclude the industrial park because there are other programs available for, matter of fact, not only were we excluding the industrial park, we weren't providing in our proposed resolution any, any benefit for industrial projects anyways. It was strictly commercial and residential projects. And so in doing that, the one thing that we need actually before the resolution is we have to have a description of our area. The thought that I had and that I wanna run by Jerry and maybe have him run by people that he deals with is, if we were to make the entire village the CRA area, but still restrict that we don't allow it on industrial projects, that would mean that practically speaking, nothing out at Industrial Park could apply for one. But we may be able to just use the quote term, the territorial limits of the village of Hicksville, rather than taking the time and paying some surveyor to go out and draw, you know? And then we could use the current village map and highlight it. The other advantage that that would have is, he had mentioned wanting us to address future annexation of areas. If we did it that way, I could just include a paragraph that basically said, in the event that there is area annexed and attached to the village in the future, that those areas would automatically become part of the CRA as soon as they were admitted as part of the village, and it would solve that problem completely. So I do wanna confirm that. The other thing that I wanted to confirm with, it might, maybe somebody else here knows more, is the school board meeting maybe like next?
Monday.
Next Monday. I know the next step is, before we even pass our resolution, is we gotta have the format of our resolution so Jerry can take it to the school board and make sure they're tentatively okay with everything. And if they are, then we can come back and we can start considering it for passing it on. So I wanna talk to him about, even if we don't have our finalized geographic description, if I got the meat and potatoes in the resolution, if that, he thinks that's enough for him to go and meet with the school board to get that process going.
Was it a possibility that if someone were, wouldn't get annexed into the village, that it might not qualify?
I wondered about that. That's one of the things I was gonna talk to him is if, you know, whatever particular area, town that's just outside but are already affluent or something like that, that from an income standpoint, wouldn't qualify. And I guess that, my guess would be that would be a possibility. So that was one of the other, part of the questions I was gonna ask him. So, and then this weekend, I was working on, Diane and I talked about this, on the Sherwood income taxing. It's been a little more of a project because their current, it's not like I could take their current thing and just kinda throw our, throw our stuff into it because they currently are being collected by the Regional Income Tax Authority, which has a standard contract, which is quite detailed, but it includes a number of things other than the collection of income taxes. It includes, included the use of their computers, their software, proprietary information as far as exchanging the information back and forth. And so I've basically been in the process of custom drafting that. And I'm trying to get it finalized because I wanna be able to get that presented because we're shooting to be able to start, and the logical time is to start at the beginning of the year. But there's some work on our end, once it's approved by the income tax department as far as getting those people input into the computer and, and all of that stuff that we wanna have some time to do. We don't wanna be passing it the first week of December and then having somebody scrambling at the end of the year trying to get people loaded in, so that's where that.
Would that be very expensive for the village to gear up for that?
I don't, the way I understood it was, it wasn't, other than man hours, you correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, somebody's gonna have to physically input some information into our existing.
It's not gonna cost us anything.
Software, other than somebody sitting there doing it. Right? Am I correct in that? I mean.
Maybe we don't have to buy new software and different computers and all that stuff?
Sherwood does. We don't.
Right, okay, right.
We use our existing stuff. They buy their computers and then that, and software, and that'll allow them to transmit the information to us on our software that we have. So that the expense will be on their end.
I didn't think we should be doing that if there's a strong possibility we're gonna lose collecting of it anyhow.
And that's a thought too, so. And then other than that, I asked Ron earlier when we're done, we'll wait till the end. Nothing to get too excited about, but I need a short executive session for economic development reasons.
Anybody have any questions for Troy? We'll go to the reports from the department heads. Police chief?
So just to bring you up to date, we have received all of our applications for the police department positions are open. It looks like we're gonna need to hire one full-time, not more than that. And then we'll hire a couple of part-time. Received four applications, three are full-time only and one is interested in part-time only. We'll be going through those applications, doing the background checks this week, next week. Hope to meet with the personnel committee or the police and fire committee, I mean, present those people to them. And then at the next council meeting, we should be presenting personnel hire for full-time. To bring you guys, give you some information directly from my mouth rather than hearing it word of mouth from other people, there was a building that came down in town last week. What happened was, we received calls, the police department, of there being some bricks in the street. When our officer got there, it was more than just bricks in the street. It was the whole front of the building had come off. We went there for traffic control and asked the fire department for backup on traffic control. And it became obvious that that building was in the process of falling down. It was not stable. It was not safe. At that point, we told the owner, basically, he would need to do something to get it taken down. The fire chief had direct communications with the owner. A couple of contractors were contacted about bringing it down, but something had to be done right then. We couldn't keep the street closed down indefinitely with it being a main route through town. And leaving it up would have also created a problem of people going in there and possibly, you know, having a catastrophe happen. Just to let you know, that's what we did. If you have other information, you may want to ask the fire chief about what they did as far as the fire department goes. But we did not mandate who did the demolition. That was up to the property owner to actually decide, but he was told it had to be taken care of immediately. It could not be let go. He was also told he couldn't go back into the structure because it was not safe. As we were standing there, parts of the building were actually still falling down. If anybody has any questions about that, I'd be glad to.
Is there, is there a problem? Is that what you're telling us?
I'm telling you that because I've heard things and I want it to be understood. I did not order, I guess it was on TV or something, that I ordered immediately the demolition of the building. That didn't happen that way.
The only thing that could have properly happened, happened, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the way, that's the way I feel. Well, that's the way I feel, but things can always go that way as far as word getting out there, so.
I stopped up and talked to Coley, and he said, he requested that it only go down, that it be knocked down to the second floor. That's what he wanted. He wanted the top there up.
I understand what he wanted. I heard that, but that was not possible in that way. That's talking from what I heard from the contractor.
I'd say you guys made the right call in digging it down.
You guys did it fast and quick and it's safe. If you'd have let it go and somebody got hurt, then we'd been in trouble.
That was our.
Well, even if you, even if you dropped the top to the second story floor, those joists were not tied. That building sat there and rocked.
You could hear it.
I mean, it was, it was gonna go one way or the other and probably right out into B and O and handle lane and say around 18. I commend you and I commend the fire chief. B and O and handle lane and say around 18. I commend you and I commend the fire chief for getting on and getting something, getting something done before there could have been a catastrophe up there.
Thank you.
It started, what, about corridor six?
I think that's what time it is.
That's quick. Yeah, great job.
Did anybody have any other questions?
Nope. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Quite a list to go through here. I'd like to start off with Personnel. Brock Evans has stepped down from the department for personal reasons. That left us with four openings. I have two applications tonight, and I'll be bringing two more next month. The first one is, I'd like a recommendation from the mayor for Philip Carrickson. He was on the department before and had left, moved out of town. He's back in town. He's already has training and everything. So, we're good to go there.
Did you say there were two?
There's two. You want both of them now? Or do, and the other one is Ethan Hathaway. He's in Reston, he's on, already from, used to work for the village, yep.
Is Phil Carrickson, that's not the one that's a couple of years older than me, is it?
No, just son, I'm assuming.
One generation down, or two?
Two.
I think it's his grandson.
Yeah.
Philip's been gone though long enough that he'll need the physical and drug-
Both of them have been less than a year.
Well, I will recommend Philip Carrickson and Ethan Hathaway for the fire department.
And I would turn that into a motion. The mayor recommended, I would put it in the form of a motion to bring on Philip Carrickson and Ethan Hathaway as firemen.
Suck it.
Roll call, please. Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Definitely.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Last Monday, the 28th, we had a hazmat drill along with the hospital, and EMA was here. Sherwood Fire helped out in Defiance County hazmat. It went well. A lot was learned. It was good training. We got a couple of things coming up. Saturday, October 14th, the first day, well, it's Oktoberfest Day, starting at 7:00 a.m., from 7:00 to 11:00, we have a breakfast at the fire station. And then from 11:00 to 1:00, we're gonna have an open house at the fire station.
And did I see you having fire truck rides?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna have the safety house, which we had last year, the smoke house. That'll be here. We're gonna have fire extension training, fire truck rides. If somebody's never been in a fire truck before, they can go for a ride. EMS will be checking vitals.
I was reading about all that in the paper before I came tonight, and it sounds like you guys are doing a great job.
It's gonna be a busy day.
Got a lot of things going on. It sounds like a lot of fun.
Yep.
Hopefully, people will come out and support you, do breakfast and everything.
We like support.
Don't say it in your life and steer the truck.
Let me think about it.
Get back to you now, that one.
And then on the 28th, we're having our carnival from 5:00 to 8:00.
During trick-or-treating?
During trick-or-treating, yes. And that's all on my list, other than I'd like to possibly have a PFE meeting Wednesday or Thursday this week.
Can you stick around after the meeting?
Yep.
It sounds like your exercise went really well.
It did.
Included a lot of people.
It got us working with other agencies that we don't normally work with, but in a event, we would, so.
I was in on that original meeting where the hospital had requirements that they had to meet, and so, you hate to say killed a lot of birds with one stone, but-
We got a lot done.
We got a lot of people involved. Anybody have anything for the fire chief?
Good job.
Thank you.
Pass it on to your people, especially the ladies on the door.
They're doing a wonderful job.
They sure are.
Thank you. All right. EMS chief, Cody?
I also have two applicants to present tonight. The first one is Abby Shock. She works part-time in Fort Wayne. She plans to attend school next year at Ivy Tech, so she plans on sticking around for a while. And the second one is Stormy Hathaway, Ethan's wife, and both of them will need to go through EMT basic school. So, I would like to ask the mayor's recommendation pending physical background check and drug screen for both of them.
Great job. I would recommend Abby Shock and Stormy Hathaway for the EMS department.
So, are we, what, like six months, a year before they would be active?
Uh, just over six months, depending on when we can get them in a class.
I would support the mayor, the mayor's thought with a motion.
All right, sorry.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Great. Anything else to report, Troy?
Um, and just to let you guys know, there, there are two classes coming up. There's one at the end of this month, starting. They both sounded like they were pretty interested in that one, provided we can get them through and everything and ready to go by then. And if not, there is also one in January.
Great.
Hopefully, earlier one.
Where are those classes at?
Uh, the one in October is in Sherwood, so-
So, nearby, pretty close.
And the other ones in-
Well, getting, the village end of getting them ready to go should not take but a day.
Correct. Just the physical and the-
Right, right. Who sets that up? You? Ah.
So, I will be calling them both tomorrow, after I speak with Cheryl about how to set that up and everything.
That's great. Glad, glad that's happening.
Thanks, Cody.
Okay. Park director, you're on the agenda right now, if you have, I'm sorry, park, park board president.
Park board. We want to thank Ken for all the hard work he is doing, trying to coordinate getting our restroom built over in the Froggy Park area. Hopefully, that's gonna come to very soon. Know that the assault and avow today, the bids have been set out, so hopefully by sometime mid this month, we'll, hopefully, we'll award a contract, someone on that. Also, we've been working with the dedication committee. They've been coming in at the park, and they, and we understand, they are gonna be putting out some of these doggie containers for people that walk their animals, you know, if they would just use them to clean up after their animals in the park, because we do see a lot of that. So, that's all we have. We're, we try, I suppose we've already got our budget turned in, so everything's going good.
Did you decide on the placement of those posts for the waste containers?
No, we had not.
You guys were gonna decide on that?
Yeah. It was getting three of them, I believe, right, Mike?
Three or four.
Three or four. Yeah, so, no, we haven't made a decision on where we're gonna put them yet.
All right.
Okay. Have you made the decision for the location of this new restroom?
Yes, we have.
Where will that be?
It's gonna be on the, Ken's gonna show me.
That little Hicks TV- You can't draw the scale, just?
No, sorry. That's the brick step or brick sidewalk onto Froggy Park.
Mm-hmm.
There's a couple pieces of clay around stuff there. It's gonna-
Excellent choice. Excellent choice.
And some news about the grant we had to reapply for from the state for that project.
Right.
After I talked to Senator Height last week, he said he hadn't seen it across his desk, but it has been resubmitted.
Okay.
Had to go to a different committee because at first that was for the water park.
Right.
We had to resubmit for the restroom and had, you know, the contractors, architects, all the plans done. Can't help fin- finalize it.
It's less expensive on an annual basis. It's like $3,900, and they provide the computer, the software, the printer, everything. And secondly, don't need to vote on it, but they do want all the signatures of all the council people that you have agreed to it. And the reason that I like it is because at the end of the year, our SSI software does all the reports, the W2s, but then when we have to send it to the state, it's a whole separate thing. It's complicated. It takes a long time, and with UAN, it's set up by the auditor of state, so you push a button and it goes. You don't have to do the two different things. So-
So, where do we sign?
On the dotted line.
That's all you need to sign, and then you-
Yeah. He said that we don't need to vote, but we do need your signatures, all six.
You say it's gonna cost us or save us?
Save us.
Save you money.
And easier.
And much easier at the end of the year.
There you go.
Okay. Secondly, I have the letter from American Tower that has proposed payment changes and options that are up to you. I've already told her repeatedly that we weren't interested, but she's trying again, so in case you decide you want to do that. And then I have my reports. The cash report, the August Police Department, Mayor's Court collections, the media com franchise fee report. They also sent a letter with some news channel changes. I have the revolving loan report, then income tax and utility collections.
Back to this tower thing?
Uh-huh.
Don't they pay us monthly?
Yeah, $6.50.
Verizon does.
$650.
I think you're talking about the tower lines.
Verizon pays us at $6.50. I mean, they're the ones that we're actually leasing to.
So, this is not, this is not the tower down in Industrial Park?
Yeah.
I thought we got, like, $7,000, $8,000 for that.
$6.50 times 12, $65,000.
For a year, I mean.
Oh, good, $2,000. Yeah, it's been out there now about five years, probably by now. I've lost track of some of that. I think it's been out there at least five years.
Does it expire? I mean, after so long, is it there for free?
I'd have to dig out the contract. I don't know if it was like a seven-year or if it's a, maybe longer than that. I mean, I've not looked at it in the past couple of years.
We might want to check into that, and if it's gonna end out, we might as well take-
Well, it won't be free. They'll either have to redo the lease or they'll have to abandon our piece of property. I mean, it's not like it's-
Right.
They own it after.
Right.
I mean, it's still leased to them. I still don't understand how that works. We've got a lease with Verizon. It's actually Verizon's tower. How can we sell that lease to somebody else to where their deal's a Verizon?
I'd have to look at the, look at the paperwork. I know it's-
It doesn't seem quite right.
I don't, I don't understand it either.
I know it's real common in the, in the business, but I never looked into that.
Shady lawyers.
Something like that.
That would be a good new guy.
Who would, who would, I mean, is there something you could look into, Troy?
I could, yeah. I could look into it, see what the, I mean, I'd have to, Kent give me a copy of whatever the current-
It's in Cheryl's office.
In Cheryl's office. Somebody-
Yeah, she can just scan it.
Scan it and email it to me.
It'd be a handy piece of information to have, to know how this is gonna end out.
Okay, um, let's see. I, this utility report still blows my mind every time I see it. It's like, so, if I'm looking at this right, Cheryl, the water collected for the
Uh-huh.
The far right column.
Right.
Not the, not the bottom. Okay, just wanna make sure I was looking at the right number.
Does it, don't make sense to you? It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it just, it pretty much, looking at those numbers at the far right corner tells me what the monthly collection is. And I guess that's usually the thing I paid attention to when I was in her office. And then I guess you can, and then going back to the last page where the sewer is, and Cheryl should probably explain this, not me, but there's additional money that was collected for shut-offs and, and trip charges. You, you know, broken down a little more detailed, Cheryl, is that right?
Talking about the second page?
Well, the other on-
Yeah.
The other, yeah.
Yeah, the shut-offs and penalty interest. We don't have interest.
And that one under sewer.
Right.
And then the back page is the refus, which shows zero. So, no collections. All right. Well, we'll go on then. Under the mayor's report, we, I'm reminding you that the Christmas cruise through setup has begun. You go past the fairgrounds, you'll see decorations have started to be put up. Volunteers are needed. 15 years and older, please, and you can contact Denise Sutter at 419-542-9000, or Mary Wan at 419-542-7237. And this takes a lot of people to put on, folks, and so, you know, if you, the time and the place you volunteer is, is all your choice. I know from experience, they'll put you inside if you want inside. They'll put you outside. They'll put you outside and bring you inside to warm up. They'll give you inside jobs. The shifts are not, not too long, so if it's something that you can help with, please call either one of them. A reminder that there's trick-or-treat on 10/28, 4 to 6, and then there's an upcoming event for Hickory Creek. They thank you for your recent donation to the silent auction. Was that a poll pass or?
No, that was lunch with the mayor.
Well, I think there were two, you know, I know I did lunch with the mayor, but anyway. Okay, um, so there, let's see. It says, "Our safe trick-or-treat for the community is 10/26/17." This is at Hickory Creek. "At 6:00 p.m. we are current," and then we are, "10/26/17 at 6:00 p.m." And then they're currently accepting donations of candy for trick-or-treating at Hickory Creek. And then they're holding their annual silent auction for Festival of Reefs again this year. Reef donations can start coming in after Thanksgiving. They can be for any season. And then it says, "We hope to have a wreath on every door." And then the auction will end on 12/22/17 at 6:00 p.m. And that's information from Danya Anderson. And you have in your packet a letter from a resident regarding sidewalks, and he actually was in my office shortly after he dropped the letter off, and, and I think that I answered some questions for him, that, things that maybe he wasn't aware of, and, but I told him I would still go ahead and put the letter in the packet for you to see, that he had concerns. Like to congratulate Ron Jones on his retirement from Ohio Gas. It's great.
Yeah, it was great. First day not working, so that's why I'm gonna help him. You bored already?
You helping board the winters up? Probably gonna shut down with you gone, aren't they? Like, how, where you been there, '44?
'46.
'46.
That's great.
Good company.
Well, I was reading in the paper before I came that the Oktoberfest is coming up on Saturday, October 14th, and starting out again with the fireman's auxiliary breakfast. And there are a lot of fun activities going on, from a scarecrow making contest to hay rides and lots of things. Two new beers to try at the brewery. There's just a lot of fun things going on, so- So check the newspaper, and I don't know if there's a list anyplace else in town, I really don't know, I read it in the paper.
Chamber Facebook and, or Chamber website, I think has it on there, and they're-
Okay.
Facebooking, under Facebook.
They, they've got a lot of fun things lined up for the festival in Hicksville on October 14th. And it sounds like the Meet the Cops went very well at the Huber, that was a nice event that they put on. It's always nice to have you guys meet the community. I know council likes that, too. Like to congratulate the Micah Schrader on going to districts.
Whole team.
For the, the whole team, okay. The girls' golf team, and they've had a great season, it sounds like. And last but not least, we received a petition to put the streetlights up again on Haver Drive, and it's got some signatures here for the Haver Drive residents. And it was, this particular petition was done by Kayla Elwood, who is seven years old and lives on Haver Drive, and it's just really cute that she went out and got signatures to get the streetlights put back up on Haver Drive. And for those who are, who live on Haver Drive and are wondering, the power company actually headed south to help those who didn't have power after the hurricanes, so as soon as they, Kent tells me, as soon as they get caught up down south giving people power, they'll be back up here to put some streetlights out on Haver Drive, so thank you for your patience. Anybody have anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to ask from the executive session to discuss economic development.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?